To order for June 26, 2024, starting with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
He is no longer with us.
Then.
Resigned.
Chris Hiltunin.
Excuse the absent.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling, here. Wayne Tornow.
Here.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Here, thank you. Item number four, approval slash amendments to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion is supporting. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin is absent. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes. Item number five, approval of minutes from May 22 of 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in support. Tom's supporting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll calls, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin is absent. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to now read the rules for public comment and public hearing comments. Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, for example, subdivision association condo, business group, similar groups. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in she provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. Tonight, we have three public hearings. We're going to start with new business. The first public hearing is in regards to 3847 Green Drive, requesting rezoning from C2 to small business district R1, one-family residential. We'll open the public hearing at 7:04. And... Planner would like to... Steve, is it?
Good evening. Tonight, you have a request from Jennifer Weaver, 3847 Green Drive. Property ID is 7414-676-0001-000. The parcel size is 1.06 acres. And she's requesting a rezoning from C2, which is small business, to R1, which is single-family. The property is currently developed with a former party store that's been there for quite a while, and the associated site improvements. And my understanding is the developer or property owner intends to utilize the property for, in the future, for residential purposes. And therefore, the requested zoning is before you. I've provided you with the current zoning ordinance and map. It shows where the parcel is located. It shows that all surrounding properties are currently zoned, single-family. Also, the master plan, while it does show that the property is master-planned as their intended future land use is commercial, my, you know, it's fairly reasonable to conclude that the master plan was developed because of that party and that the designation was placed there because of that existing party store, not because we anticipated a future growth of a retail center in that area. Typically, as you know, we review and base our decisions, recommendations for rezonings on consistency with the area, compatibility with the area, compatibility with the goals of the master plan and that. I find it's consistent, and I'm recommending approval of the rezoning as requested.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. The applicant, Jennifer Weaver, if you're present, if you'd like to come forward and add anything. It's up to you. You don't have to.
I don't know what I can... Well...
Just come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Jennifer Weaver, 3847 Green Drive, Harson's Island. The one thing that I was told to ask is if, in the future, it would be able to go commercial. And when I say "future," I mean 10 years, you know? I just don't know. But I'm stuck between a rock and a hard spot because I can't get a loan. No one can get a loan on the property the way it stands.
Okay. Anybody can ask for rezoning? Is that correct, in the future?
Do we have to go, may I do the same process, have a rezoning?
Yes. Okay. So the answer would be yes.
Okay.
Just have to go through the same process, but reversed.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward for the public hearing on this particular matter? If you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address, that'd be great. I don't see anybody coming forward. At this point, then I'll close the public hearing at 7:08. Does the board members have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
So right now, the property is commercial, and you want to eventually develop that into residential, possibly, depending on the buyer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So have you done any study as far as the land itself is concerned? And if it is possible to construct residential buildings?
There's already a resident on the property.
Okay, where is that at?
Next to the store.
Right here. Oh, right there in the house? Okay. Okay, so it is separated from the actual commercial building. So I just want to make sure you understand that down the road somewhere, they might say, well... Because Eagle is pretty hot and heavy out here, all right? So I just wanted you to understand that. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning from C2, small business district, R1, one-family residential, for JPC 2024-004, also known as 3847 Green Drive. Recommend to the township board for approval of the rezoning to R1.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Sue, do you have that motion? Any comments? Hearing none, could you please do a roll call?
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin is absent. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes. Motion carries. Your request has been granted. It has... Well, I shouldn't think granted goes to the board of trustees next, okay?
Do I need to stamp this? For signatures?
You need to sign. It has to be the board of trustees.
No, I know. But it's on here. It asks to stamp and sign if approved.
Stamp and sign. We can do that, but it's still up to the board of trustees.
No, I know that. So that's why I'm asking if we need to stamp it, and she needs to sign it.
Fill out that form first.
That would probably happen at the board.
Yeah. Well, we wouldn't sign it there, but...
I'm going to say no at this point.
Okay.
Well, Steve or Karen say something different. Nope.
Okay. Just because that was specifically on that one. So that's all.
Okay. This is the moment where Robert catches up with the paperwork. We've done them both, please.
I guess I can do this to make it easy. Yeah, there's the... There's the current transformer. Can I pass that, please? That's 16 feet. It's got to be seven. Or at least a vehicle. I need to sign that again. Exit. Yeah, you're going to go... They've got the gas station.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on to item 6B, which is also a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 6:13, and it's for an application for special approval of land use for a proposed driveway through a building 2650 of the Kroger Plaza, 2600 Point Tremble Road, 74-14-442-0095-000. Steve?
This request comes from the applicant, Ron Hall. It's at 2600 Point Tremble. The property is currently zoned C3, general business. The applicant's in front of you to request special land use approval to construct a drive-through lane and service window on the east side of the building, which was formerly occupied in the Kroger parking lot, formerly occupied by Family Video. At this point, the applicant has not identified a potential user. My understanding is he intends to construct the drive-through to make the lease space more desirable to a few possible tenants. The... There has... There was a site plan that was submitted. And what the site plan does, it modifies the parking spaces and maneuvering lanes directly adjacent to the east side of the building to construct this lane and drive-through window. The result will reveal that loss of 13 parking spaces. However, this site and the property can accommodate that loss of parking and still meet zoning ordinance requirements. Section 1503 of zoning ordinance specifies it does allow drive-through lanes and windows, provided that the planning commission is satisfied that vehicular circulation patterns are designed to minimize disruption. I've reviewed the plans, and in my opinion, this does meet the ordinance, and I recommend approval. However, I recommend approval, subject to review and approval by your police chief.
Police chief?
Police department or chief.
Police department. Thank you, Steve. We... We have in our packet a review by the police department. Did you not get that?
I didn't see that.
Send it back to the point where... You want to see this one, Steve? Yep.
Our private view looks like he has no objections.
Okay. Sorry you didn't get that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry. They answered correctly, I mean, not correctly, but they answered that everything's in order.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or representative applicant? Would you like to come to the podium and state your name, please? Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name is Ron Hall. I'm the property manager for Beano Properties, which owns the center.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add with the comments that the planner has made?
Well, the space formerly Family Video is 4,500 square feet. And in the last... Since they moved out, which I understand is at least a couple of years ago, there's been no interest whatsoever in the space. And so the thought was, and by the way, it's like a little-known fact that I learned some time ago, and I've been in property management forty-some years, is that 80% of the business through fast food is done through the drive-through window. And so the thought is, if we could get a drive-through there, that it would become rentable. Worked with the city and Stephen to develop the plan. We had architects that went through and did a traffic pattern. One of the questions that Stephen had was a larger vehicle like a extended cab F-150, could it go through the drive-through and make the turn adequately? And the answer was yes. So as I mentioned, the space is 4,500 square feet. And we looked at the possibility, because at the other end of that building, you have Little Caesar and Subway. And we could reduce the size of that space to 3,000 square feet and have another 1,500-square-foot space adjacent to the subway, making it more desirable, hopefully, for a potential prospect to go in. And I've only... My background is managing apartments and condos and so on. I've only been in the commercial side for about a year with the company. And, you know, one of the problems is with a restaurant of sorts, the... There is a tremendous upfront cost to put in the equipment necessary to produce whatever it might be. We have a Tim Hortons at another center in Southfield, and we've talked to the owner of that location, potentially taking a look at this location. And I had... We've got a couple of different brokers that we work with. Hopefully, once... They wouldn't even present the center or the location to these other larger businesses until a drive-through was approved. So that's... And to do, actually put the drive-through in there, there is a large DTE transformer that's 10 feet 6 inches from the building. And it has to be moved, and there's room to move it and accommodate the drive-through, which a drive-through is typically 10 to 12 feet wide. And a large one is 12 feet wide. And so there's ample room to move that. But we've got to work with DTE. We submitted all the information and required data to DTE and have a representative that would meet with a contractor to go through the actual construction work to move the transformer. So there's a number of obstacles to overcome, but that's our hope.
Okay, thank you.
And I've talked to a number of different businesses and owners in the area. Aided Clay Cafe and some of the others. And I'm talking to the people in the city offices here. I said, well, you know, we'd love to have another breakfast place, you know, because we don't have that many places. So that's kind of what we were hoping for. A Tim Hortons, you know, is a great company. And they don't typically get the large crowds, let's say, at a time like McDonald's or Chick-fil-A. I mean, I don't understand why Chick-fil-A has double lanes everywhere, but they do. And people love them. So our hope would be to get somebody a nice breakfast place that would potentially go in there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any board member comments or questions from... or anybody? Okay, what I have in our packet is a very small site plan, I guess. I don't know if it... I mean, I could blow it off our computer, but I don't have a big site plan. Is it... Do we...
I've got several in my car, one of them.
Do we have the big one?
Yes, I think both do.
So Steve or Karen? Do we need a site plan tonight to be able to do a stamp for it or not?
This is a...
Okay. So do you have...
I have a copy.
Not the copy that was left.
So I have a copy.
I have Club Capri. Anybody else have this one?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Any members of the audience who'd like to come forward on this public hearing for the Kroger Plaza drive-through? I see no one stepping forward. Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:18. Missioners, any comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I think that that's a really good idea that you guys have come up with because 4,500 square feet is way too big. And the idea of splitting it off is a really good idea with this drive-through. You'll probably be pretty successful with that.
Anybody else?
When are you going to start the construction?
Well...
Give her a little help with that one.
He has to get a tenant first.
He's got to get it approved first.
First step for us was we found a contractor that has done many drive-throughs, including McDonald's. And they have relocated transformers. The first step would be approval, obviously. But then, for us to write a $5,000 check so our contractor can meet with DTE, and then we don't even know the cost with the contractor to move it. But subsequent to this meeting, if we got approval, you know, we would contact them to try to get a better understanding of what... And we know it's probably the whole process is like $40,000 to $50,000. It's not a $5,000, $10,000 situation. But, you know, we... The owner is committed to maintaining the center. We recently painted it entirely, all the columns, all the buildings, all the woodwork. Have a contractor coming out to straighten the parking lot and maintain it. There's some cracks and so on. Worked with the fire department and the police department to handle the little issues that we've had more recently. You know, the owner's committed to maintaining the facility and is proud to be a part of the community, quite frankly.
Not like the guy in Algenack? Not like the guy in Algenack? The CVS parking lot and all that, it's always a mess.
Any other questions regarding this particular request? And if no one else, anybody want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for proposed drive-through building at 2650 of the Kroger Plaza, located at 2600 Point Tremble, number 7414-442-0095-000, zoned as C3.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Sue, get the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Schweickart.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin is absent. Tom Cozel.
Yes.
And Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
So the motion passes. We only have one large site plan. We're usually supposed to have three.
I have...
I see.
I've got one for everybody.
Do you... Would... Just to save time, and so we don't have to people come back because we needed stamp, and since we're all here, we have one? Gary's got one. Is it the same one? It's a different one. Hold on. Where'd you get?
This one. This is the big one.
Would you be so kind if you want to do this? We've got one. We need two more. Would you mind doing that? And that way we can get it all completed, and you don't have to come back, and you don't have to?
I'll get them right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Say what? Well, there's three. No, there was three pages to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's three pages to it. I'm sorry.
They're slightly different.
Yeah, this is different.
This is...
There's three of them. There's three pages to each site plan.
So he can stamp that one. We can go on with that. Add that to my list.
Now, do we even need the...
She's going to need a bigger piece of paper.
You're right, I do.
I have three different large prints.
35.
One of the topography, one of the drive-through, and one of the drive-through with an F-150.
Yes.
That's the one you want?
This is what we have. In our packet, we have the smaller versions, but this is the...
Right.
It has all three of them.
Oh, okay, you want all three?
Please.
Oh, okay. No problem.
You just need two sets of those.
Okay.
Analyst Gary can get us one. Maybe Gary can get us one. These aren't stapled either.
Yeah, they are.
Hey, Gary, would you mind finding us a stapler so we can staple them together? Thank you. I know. I don't feel comfortable moving to the next one. Okay, so I have one of those. I have one, so we have another of those for the next one.
Should I wait to go to the next one? Okay, I'm going to ask. So what we did get was this one.
Thank you. I'll hand you this one back. That's a fixed stapler.
We're keeping it.
For long-term, right?
In other words.
Even got a stapler, even if it does happen. So there's the one. We just need two of yours.
Two of each.
One, two, and that's the other page that goes with it. So we've got two of those also.
Yep.
But let's get them all stapled. Maybe we can ask Steve to make sure we have all the staples. We'll give one to Debbie. Now we have one, Debbie. Make sure you got. Here you go. Now I only get two. I need three. We need one, two. I need the one with the truck. Got the one with the truck?
This one.
Vehicles? I need one with the vehicle.
I guess you don't have this one.
Correct. She thinks the.
This should be an initial drive-through.
This one we got.
That's an initial drive-through. And then that, that one will be here for the truck.
Should be under the site plan. So one's going. How's that? Do you have that one?
Yeah.
There you go. Do I need that one?
Not yet. All right, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Initially, I was told to generate 20 copies and then, then I called back and they said, no, no, just give us three. I brought three.
It's all good. We'll get that one at the truck. There you go. Staple and pull for it. That's it. We'll just have a stapler and stamp it. Sign that one? Hmm? There you go. You can keep this one, this is yours.
Okay.
We just need you to sign two more, so just four more. You're talking to a stapler, yes, yes. Did you hear a staple?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
I don't know if you test.
Put one in the corner and I keep it.
Whatever you want to do. He's just holding. Go on. I'm going to hand it to him, he's going to stick. I think he can do this. There you go.
Today's 26.
26. Sign that one, we keep that one, and we need one more signed. I think he's done it a few times before. What do you think?
I get changes like every few years. Like I never used to have.
I played, uh, like I'm going to get killed.
Just that one and then you're all signed, okay?
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Oh, that was a hot day.
And then Monday.
Oh, geez.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to item number 6A, which is also a public hearing. It's a public hearing for the owner of 6343 Dyke Road, application for special land use for proposed outdoor patio at Club Capri, Zone C2. Public hearing is, um, 7:40. Karen?
The applicant is proposing an outdoor patio at 6343 Dyke Road. The patio will be located at the southwest corner of the existing restaurant. The proposed patio would be able to seat 30 patrons. Three-foot-high steel patio fence would enclose the area. Section 20.31 provides the regulations for outdoor patios. The regulations cover whether additional parking would be needed. And because the patio is indicated to serve 30 patrons, no additional parking is needed for the site. However, I do ask that the applicant confirm whether there's going to be any live entertainment for the outdoor patio area. So long as the applicant is able to confirm whether if there will be any outdoor entertainment and whether the standards for outdoor entertainment will be met for this section, I recommend approval of the special land use.
Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant here or it's a representative who'd like to come forward? You can state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Herb Blackstock, and the architect of record, representing the owner. The description is just that. It's a simple 18-by-40 flat patio with a steel fence around it, which is just entirely to meet liquor control requirements. At this point, there's no planned outdoor entertainment. And the business hours in the summer, during the week, they close at nine, which they'll be closing everything at business hours. And I believe they're open until 10:00 on Fridays and Saturdays. So those are the business hours, the latest that'll be going through the summer. Winter hours, obviously. I don't think anybody would be using the patio. But again, at this point, there's no planned outdoor entertainment. It's just outdoor seating.
Any commission members have any questions right this moment?
So you have a proposed, there's a gate. Are you going to have an overhang on that?
Nope, it's not covered, just an open patio.
Or a, no canopy?
Nope. There'll be some, just tables and then potted vegetation, some trees.
Entrance is just from the outside?
Uh, no, it's, it's in the pre, we previously came before you, I think a month ago, to put an addition on. There's a gate, which is primarily for egress, but we're trying to control, we want people to come through the normal operation so they're aware of who's sitting there. So the lobby directed through the hostess station and then back into the seating if they choose.
How wide is the gate?
Three foot.
Well, I have.
Who else?
Three foot would accommodate a wheelchair?
Three foot's, yeah, that three foot's a minimum commercial door, meets ADA requirements.
I was going to ask a question of Gary. I'm not sure I'm really provided that, no funds or I can't quite.
It's in private space, so when they're proposing three-foot fence, that's perfectly.
So you're okay with that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward for this public hearing, please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name's Richard Kaminsky, 6316 Marina Drive. And I'll be one of the people that are most directly affected by this. I have the house directly behind them. And first off, I'd like to say we welcome it. I think it'll make the building look nice. Our only concern was the music and if there's increased boat traffic, that they'll maintain a lane down there for, for someone to be able to still get in and out by boat. And other than that, welcome to the community.
Thank you.
So we're on her side.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other members of the audience who'd like to come forward? Seeing no one else, close the public hearing at 7:45. Karen, do you have any further comments in regards to, any? Nope, okay. So it sounds like there's no plans for live entertainment, the hours, nine through the week and time Friday, Saturday? Any discussion once?
I've got a question. So if at some point in the future they wanted to do live entertainment, would they have to come back in front of us again to do that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
On the rocks head, too.
Yep.
Yep.
Got a probationary period.
Yeah.
Same, same spot. But yes, the answer to that is yes, okay? Any other planning commission member comments? Looks like the parking's okay as far as the additional seating. Other than Gary, that was the only one I was looking for, the department has just to make clarification. I'm not seeing anything else at this point. Anybody here make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for special approval land use for outdoor patio at Club Capri, 6343 Dyke Road. And this is JPC 2024-006. And the property is Zone C2.
I'll say it.
So you have a motion of support? Any discussion? So you got the motion? There are no discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Schweickert?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Robert Musling?
Yes.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin is absent. And Tom, Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Christopher Daggie is resigned. Wayne Tornow?
Yes.
Okay, if you would wait us a moment so we can, if these signed? There's one.
I got three.
I'm just cleaning up my pile table on them, they can pay up in house.
Yeah, so I'm thinking.
Because I don't want to take them home and create more paperwork in my house. Fair enough. And I need somebody to sign. There's a pen on the applicant, right there. Go ahead. Go on. Right here. Okay. And one more. And you get to keep this one, and the other two go to the building department. And good luck with your project. Thank you. All right. Have a nice evening. I'll have to say back to you. Thank you. Going on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. So, yeah. Item number eight, planning consultants report. Who wants to do that one? Steve?
As everybody knows, this is my last meeting here. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve you over the last several years, and I appreciate all your kindness and courtesy. I can tell you, I've done this a long time and been to hundreds of planning commission meetings, and you guys are up there when it comes to professionalism and, you know, running a business, running the meetings the way you do. And the residents of the Clay Township should be proud to have you serve as their planning commission. So with that, thank you very much, and I'll miss all of you.
We're going to miss you, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much enjoy your retirement. Appreciate that. Do you have anything more you want to add, since you all have the planning report?
I'm excited to. You guys, thank you.
So are we, thank you. Item number nine is ZBA representative's report. Debbie Addy, he has so kindly agreed to update us.
The first case they had was 9886 Washington Street. The residents wanted a six-foot fence. It's in a wooden area. The board approved it. Um, the board approved it, a six-foot fence with the finished side being on the neighbor's side. Another case for six-one-four-zero South Channel. They wanted a variance for a second-floor accessory structure. The, it's a two-acre parcel with a canal that runs through it, and it's going to be for, um, for day storage and a taxidermy. That was also approved. The final case was for seven-zero-three-zero Middle Channel. Um, these folks wanted a third story, a third accessory structure. There was a suggestion that they combine sheds to a garage that they're going to build. They haven't done that yet, so this one was denied. And that's it.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate that. Item number ten is board representative's report, which would be Mark.
Okay. Um, nothing really, other than we have a busy, busy July coming up with a pickle tournament, car shows, art fairs, so stay safe out on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item number eleven is chairperson's report, and the top of my list is Christopher Daggie is no longer with us. He resigns, so therefore we need a ZBA representative. If anybody is so inclined, raise your hand or push your seat back.
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention to you, somebody said that Chris Hiltunin might be interested.
You know what? We can wait till the next meeting, because he's the only one that's not present, and I haven't heard anything, which is fine. So I just asked you, since you had said on the ZBA before, to at least get us up to date with what happened at the last meeting. I printed it out and figured you'd be able to figure that out, so. I have no problem waiting to the next meeting, if everybody else is okay with that.
Fine with that.
They are.
Wait till the next meeting.
Wait till the next meeting? Um, also, I just, I believe Mr. Supervisor Eric Brayson sent out to all of us upcoming key projects, which Karen's probably gonna be really involved in some of these. Master plan review, that time again, apparently. Uh, zoning overlay for San Soucy area, the new DDA for San Soucy Business District, which I don't know if that's passed yet. And I don't think it has either, so, never rising. And then zoning ordinance review. From our enforcement officer, has known some ambiguities, some ordinating inconsistencies. So those are a couple items that we're gonna be looking shortly in the future to address. Steve, you're gonna enjoy your retirement. Very much thank you, Steve, for being with us. You've made our jobs a lot easier up here. It's been very, very helpful.
Thank you.
I'm sure Karen will carry on in the same fashion.
You're in great hands with Karen.
Yeah. So thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, and I'd like to recognize that Gary from the building department's here, so thank you for your input and helping us get things organized that weren't quite ready for us tonight, so thank you. We'll give you back your stapler maybe. Okay? It's like, oh yeah, Lance is hiding back there, too. Well, I'm sure he's gonna say something maybe, but yeah, thank you. Item number twelve, planning commission member comments. Anybody on this planning commission want to make a comment?
Just want to say thanks to Steve. Really appreciate it, and all of your help and the time that you've done with us. Gonna miss you. Even though we're in good hands, we're still gonna miss you. But have a wonderful retirement, and wish you all the life's best. It's a, it's a new chapter.
Yeah, I know where he lives.
Oh! Right over Debbie. We used to be neighbors. Okay. Any other board members' comments? Actually, how about our road rally? Do you want to make a comment on that, because somebody is not here.
Someone is not here. Um, SS Downtown Inc. held their first-ever road rally on Hurson's Island on June the eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
June fifteenth. Saturday, June fifteenth. We had nineteen teams, which equivalent equalized to about eighty-two people. Everybody appeared to have a great time. It was a great event, safe event. We even had a buffet breakfast at San Soucy Bar that was very well attended. Um, we had two, a winner and a runner-up in a third place, and our first-place team actually was the Hiltunins. Chris and his wife and their son came in first place. And, um, we're looking forward to next year. Everybody seemed to like it. We had a great time. The weather was perfect. It was a lot of fun, and I thank everybody that attended and helped make it a success for us.
Any other board comments? If not, I'll move on to item number thirteen, which would be public comments. Anybody in the public who wish to address? Come forward to the podium. I don't see anybody rushing up here, so I'm gonna take a guess. It's a big no. So with that said, item number fourteen would be adjournment.
Support.
Motion, that's support. Motion, support.
Who's the supporter?
Uh, Mark.
To Mark.
All in favor, all opposed. Meeting's adjourned. Everybody have a great Fourth of July, by the way.